...Town Council Meeting for January 8, 2019. Happy New Year. This time, if everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is this year by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
You're the main standing for Ms. Howes Allen. As Mr. Parks mentioned, Ms. Howe won't be here tonight, and Mr. McIntyre has not yet arrived. First on our agenda is additions and deletions. Do we have any additions?
I'd like to make an addition, please. I'd like to add 10E, North Carolina DNR Sediment and Erosion Control Plan Review Schedule.
Okay.
I have one other addition.
Yes.
Let's add it to 12G, Manager's Update, Brandon Oaks Sidewalk.
Okay. Any objection from council?
I've got a deletion as well.
Okay. So moved. Mr. Head?
Have, like to delete 9A.
Okay.
And would also like to add, I guess, under Old Business, Reliable Growth Meeting. Want to talk about that for...
Is that an update, Mr. Head?
Yes.
And that's you?
Yes.
What number was that?
We'll just put it as J.
J, okay.
Yeah, J comes after I. Any objection? Okay. And due to school, Ms. Winn won't be here tonight, so we're gonna postpone the proclamation. If that's okay with council? Which is Presentation B.
For B.
Okay. Any other additions or deletions? Patrick, you okay with everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Head's made the motion, all in favor. So moved. First presentations are for new business presentation. Is Doodle Sasser Distillery here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You'd step up to the mic. Welcome. We have a town manager started this tradition to welcome new businesses and give you a minute or two to tell us where you're located, who you are, and a quick overview of your business. You're on.
Good to meet y'all. I'm Paul Collins. This is my wife, who's sitting there letting me do this all alone in the spotlight, you know, making me look better. We are a new distillery. We're right down the road. You just come out the front door, take a right, and right past the library, we're on the left. This is a, an example of the product you'll be seeing in the ABC stores sooner than later, thankfully. It's about three years in the process, so we're finally, you know, starting to move. We'll be giving away free T-shirts with all of our liquor in the, in the stores there. It is a very smooth whiskey. It's got a bit of a smoky finish, and we are grain to bottle in Indian Trail. We've been contracting our mash in over with Sweet Union Brewing, and Travis is over there working with us and helping out, and we'll be building on that. This is what our first T-shirts look like. We're just spreading simple truth: You cannot drink all day if you don't start in the morning. We're here to help. The, the next T-shirt is more of an encouraging T-shirt. It says, it has our logo on the front and says, "Yes, trust me, you can dance." So, you know, if it's funny, a little irreverent, but still in the bounds of socially, you know, acceptable, that's probably gonna be on one of our T-shirts walking around. So, that's basically it. If y'all got any thoughts or questions, we're happy to help, and we'd like to invite y'all down for a, for a tour and a tasting at the distillery. We're open 10 to 6, Monday through Friday, and 10 to 4 on Saturdays.
Mr. Coan?
Do you have a specific time that you give, like tours?
When you walk in, we are jumping and walking you back.
I, I love both those T-shirts. I really do. And I just wanted to just kind of throw a hint your way that generally, when people come up here, they leave samples for the day.
Yeah, we, we wanted to make sure we were all proper, and we do samples down at the distillery consistent with our license, and we want to keep that that way, because Mr. Honeycutt with the ALE was a really nice guy, but I got a feeling if I step a toe in the wrong side of the line, he's probably gonna be less than cordial. So, I want to make sure I'm clean.
When you say whiskey, you're saying, like bourbon whiskey?
We meet the qualifications for bourbon all the way up to the ending of the aging, and we age in roughly a month. In fact, our new label to, to do our work here in Indian Trail, TTB, which is the government folks at the federal level, said we had to give an aging statement now, and I was in one of my less filtered moods when I responded to them. And so, they sent me a thing that says, "You must state that it was aged no less than blank," and I gotta fill in the blank. So our new label says, "Aged no less than one week, because greatness doesn't take forever." And so, it's like, there you go. And it came back approved, so now it's on the label. And so that's how it goes.
Any other questions? No?
All right.
Well, as a welcome, we'd like to give you a plaque.
Outstanding.
Welcome you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Good to see you again. Good to see you again. You're gonna have some good customers up here. Nice to meet you.
Well, that's the neat thing about politics, that the other side wins, the other side loses, and they all gotta drink for some reason, right? Good to meet you.
Is Scotty here? I don't see him out there. So we'll move Scotty's cuts. I think he's still open. All right. That brings us to this Item C, the IT Construction Crew Recognition. Mr. Sadek, did you, are you doing that, or is Adam doing that?
I'm gonna turn it to Adam, but I did share with, I did share with council recently about extending our construction crews' hours and also the accomplishment that they had the last 12 months. So, Adam, it's all yours.
So, our construction crews, our public work crews are here tonight, most of them. They can stand up really quick just for a second. So, this group of guys back there is who, Patrick sent out the list about, not too long ago, about the cost savings that they had had this year on about a dozen projects or so. Starting January 2nd, they started with 40 hours a week, so we as staff usually are 35. They've gone to 40 to be able to increase some of that cost savings and to do a few more other projects that we'll have as the year goes along. So we just wanted to say thank you to them for everything that they've done for us. So.
Adam, if you would tell, just give the residents an idea of what they saved us on this, just on this, this walkway back here, doing it themselves.
So the walk, the affinity trail was roughly, about $30,000 is what it cost us to build it, and I think we estimated about $80,000 to construct it. So on that one project, that's pretty sizable savings. And then we had several other, we, we estimated about $180,000 over about 10 projects, so.
Okay. That moves us to the public comments portion. We will open that. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the Internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently otherwise result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing a grievance during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect our town employees' right to a fair hearing of your grievance. When I call your name, please step to the microphone, state your name, and your time will begin.
Welcome. Hi. My name is Connie Carroll. I'm an 18-year resident of Indian Trail, and my comment is about the Union County Sheriff's Office and their procedures, and it's more of a question. My son and three of his friends were involved in an incident Saturday night at the Indian Trail Waffle House and Cookout. Union County Sheriff's Office was called to the scene, and I have heard many sides of the story from many people that were there. I was not there, so I'm not 100% sure all of what happened, and there have been some conflicting reports, so I'm not gonna go into that. My two main concerns are that the four boys that were there were all minors. One was age 17, the other was 16, and no parents were called to be told that their children were in an incident that required police to be called to the scene. My second concern is that during the situation, it was said, I don't know if it was ever proved and it was never investigated, that one of the people involved had a gun. Because that was said, the boys fled from Waffle House to Cookout, and when the police came, they were told that they had went back and investigated the men who apparently were harassing the boys, which caused them to leave. But then we were later told by the people at Waffle House that nobody ever came back and talked to the gentleman in question, so we don't know if they did or did not have a gun. So my concern is, first of all, I did not know if the town council was aware that another parent asked the Sheriff's County, the county sheriff's office if it is procedure to call a parent if a minor child is involved in an incident where police are called to the scene, and the sheriff's office said, "No, it is not procedure. It's based on, you know, the situation." Since Saturday night, I have talked to probably 25, 30 parents, and all of them were shocked to hear that. We feel like if our children, which 16 and 17-year-old boys are still children, if they are in an incident where a police officer is called to the scene, and in this case, I think four or five police officers came, that we should be notified, and we weren't. And that is a concern of mine. And second of all, I was very dismayed that there was possibly a gun involved in what happened, and nobody ever proved or disproved or even investigated that. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No questions? At this time, there's no other public comments speakers. I'm going to close public comments and open up the law enforcement update. Captain Cobal, welcome. Happy New Year.
So out of respect for time on the agenda tonight, what I've done is, I went ahead and passed out the round one of our 2018 year-end summary report that I'll be giving to you in pieces, but I wanted to go ahead and get you the first.
Your time's up.
Time's up. Man, that was quick. So, so what we did was we just started out with the front page, and I'll just briefly kind of run through, just talked about our new community crime mapping, where folks can go online on the website, look up things going on in their neighborhood around where they work at here in town. Matthews Police Department's online with that now as well, so that really helps to kind of blend to where everybody can kind of see some trends from the public side of it. Then also, we talked about the new office space, because that was a big deal for us this spring and getting moved over there. And then flipping back around, we've got some of the pictures from our new office space, going into, talking about the Monroe Bypass, and a little bit more in-depth about how that affected us, the sheriff's office, as far as having extra duties out there during the time that it was under construction, and then how that's also benefited us now during the time that it's been open and being able to utilize that roadway to get back and forth to our main office and to other training facilities. Then one of the things that I always like to do is just go back and grab a snapshot of some of our things that had made the news, so just doing a, a normal news search, going through and just taking the headlines of some of the things that's made the news from this year, and followed through with that, along with a couple of the community events that were attended by deputies here at schools and at different locations and churches throughout the, throughout the town. And then on the back, kind of tried to give you a hint as far as to what we're gonna be looking for on the second round of the report here. This is a public version. If you turn it, turn it like this here, you see the town and this outlined into our zones. You got the north side, and then you got the south side of Indian Trail outlined, and then you can, that's a heat map, so you can kind of see the density of where your crime or where your criminal activities are reported at here in town. And then as you see, the, the color variations going around the Unionville Indian Trail 74 corridor there, that gets into more of your retail, and like we've talked over and over before about, you get some of the big box retail store, and that's obviously gonna give you a heightened area to where you got theft and other, other criminal activity going on at. So, just kind of a hint as to, but all that, on the heat map side of it, is available on the website that's listed on the front here that we've been talking about all year to where the public can go to the website and look up a location, or just look around town, and pick and choose between different types of crimes, whether it be, you know, death investigations or homicide, or all the way down to, you know, just a traffic incident or a DWI. So, like today, just, just looking through there, I just did a 2018 map of Indian Trail, clicked on DWI, and took all the other fields out of it, so it kind of gives you a snapshot about where people were arrested for DWI in town on a map. So it's pretty visual to be able to get on there and move around and navigate around town, so. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Captain. This time, we're up to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve, all in favor. So moved unanimously. There are no public hearings. That brings us to Old Business. First item up on the agenda is the Sun Valley High School Marching Band donation. Mr. Sadek, did you want to take the lead on this one?
Yes, sir.
To refresh everyone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So far, we've been approached by two nonprofit, both of them, if I, my memory serves me right, they were here the last couple of meetings. The first one was Sun Valley High School Martian Band, and I'm gonna jump to Item Number C, which is Crime Stopper. So we evaluated our budget. We do have the $3,000 in our budget for nonprofit organizations, and so what I'm recommending to council is that we, we could go ahead and, and permit $1,000 to $1,500 for Item Number B and $500 for Item Number C.
Questions, council? Objections? Mr. Coan?
I'd just like to go ahead and approve $1,505. I think both of them are extremely good causes, and marching band going to...
Washington.
Washington is a great thing for our kids, so.
New York.
New York. I thought it was New York. Who said...
Well, they have to go through Washington.
He did that on purpose, by the way.
Trying to see if you're paying attention, that's all.
No, but I think it's a great, make Indian Trail proud, you know? Yeah.
I would concur with Mr. Coan's recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Coan's made a motion for $1,500 to be allocated to the Sun Valley High School Marching Band. All in favor? Opposed? The record stand, all were in favor. Mr. Morris opposing, motion passes. And the question of $500 for the Crime Stoppers BBQ, which would be 50 tickets? Correct? Okay. 50 tickets for the barbecue? Any questions, concern, or need a motion or an objection?
I'll make a motion for the $500 to the Crime Stoppers.
Okay.
One question, Mr. Sadek, that was, this $2,000 appropriation, should that 500 pass? That would leave us with 1,000 available for the next few months. Would somebody come before the council, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So I'll make the motion for the 500 to the Crime Stoppers.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to allocate $500 for 50 barbecue tickets. All in favor? Opposed? The record stand, all in favor. Mr. Morris opposing, motion passes. Hope you brought enough tickets with you. Well, get with Patrick on that one. All right. Thank you. That brings us to Item D, the Miracle League. Mr. Sadek, you want to take the lead on this?
I'll be more than happy, Mr. Mayor. If I remember, I think earlier than November, council decided to give the Miracle League, Mr. Dreath, a deadline, and I think it was November deadline, for him to come in before council and advise council whether the grant was achieved. But we did try to contact Mr. Dreath on several occasions, and I think he was unable to attend because his father-in-law passed away. So, we're just trying to follow up on the item, and I put it before council to, to take it from here. So, we did try to contact Mr. Dreath twice by phone conversation, maybe three times by, by emails, but unfortunately, I think he could not attend today because of the loss of his father-in-law.
All right. Counsel, Patrick, what, what action are you asking of the council?
I mean, if council would like to make a decision today whether to either extend until another meeting until Mr. Dreath is available to come before council, or make a decision whether not to wait, and so that will allow us to go ahead and proceed with our conceptual plan for Crooked Creek Phase Two without incorporating the area that we were trying to allocate for that Miracle League field. So, I'm sorry, I don't mean to put council, push council in the corner, but I just wanted to follow up on that item.
One more question.
Okay.
Mr. McIntyre? Did Mr. Dreath give you any indication that he would be able to respond after his period of mourning? Did he give you any indication as to how soon he'd be able to do that, or if he's willing to?
No, sir. I think he communicated with our town clerk, and that's the last communication we had with, with him, I think. Go ahead, Captain.
Ms., Ms. Winn, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that he, he told me that he has not heard anything back on the funding, so.
My understanding that was gonna occur in November.
That's correct.
So, it's not odd that we've not heard nothing one way or the other, or, excuse me, Mr. Dreath, regarding those grant money. Would you know anything about that, Mr. Tryon?
I do not have any update. I've reached out to him on multiple occasions, and Herbert did not hear back, and I actually did some research to try to find out if the grants were awarded, and I didn't see anything either way, whether it was awarded or not awarded.
Would the, would making a decision now speed up the master plan that we're working on? Or would it, or if we were to give Mr. Dreath maybe an extension of a month, would that impact us in anything we want to do from a decision-making process or standpoint for, for the Phase Two?
We, we met with John Ross, which is the most knowledgeable consultant in regard to Crooked Creek, Crooked Creek Phase Two when it comes to sewer easements, the floodplain, the floodway, and I kind of put him on notice that we should be reaching out to him anytime soon. But if we want to get something going, this second part of this fiscal year and the first part of next year, this is when construction season, we, we just need to get going. I, I think we can't delay that process anymore.
So, so your, your point is that we should really make a decision right now and not prolong it because it's hampering what we want to do?
That is correct. Michael, if you could pull those pictures that I took at the beach, there is another, there is a Part B of, of this too, that this location is in Myrtle Beach. I'm very familiar with it. To go back to the grant money, I think when Mr. Dreath proposes, proposed how to manage the project and the funding from different sources, we kind of communicated an amount of money of approximately between $350,000 to $380,000. But really, if we want to build a 200-foot ADA baseball field, there are many other components that come with the rubber, the concrete, and the land, and you could see in this picture, you do have, it has to be secured, you have to have fences around it, you have to have certain other areas for parents to sit down and monitor the children. So, yes, we exchange sort of a project cost of $350,000, but if we want to do something 100% similar to other projects in our region, that cost could go up to probably $700, $750,000. So the, the point I'm trying to make here is that if we were not able to come up with an amount of money of $350,000 or $400,000, it's gonna be more difficult to come up with a budget that's equal to $700, $750,000. So, so that, that budget that was discussed in the past, it will give us a playing field, but we have to keep in mind the sewer, the water, the restrooms, and all these areas that you see in there that complement the field itself.
I'm kind of confused a little bit because I thought we were here making a decision on whether or not Mr., we were gonna do the Miracle League for Mr. Dreath. If I'm not mistaken, Patrick, you're talking about another, a whole nother facility that the, the town may want to do instead of the, I mean, I'm a little bit confused.
No, I, I think what I'm trying to show council in these pictures and mentioning the budget is that, in my personal opinion, I don't think having a contractor to pour the concrete and another one maybe to give us a good pricing on the rubber. If you want a complete ADA baseball field, it probably requires some of these features that we're looking at that was never discussed in the past. So again, to go back to my point, is if a $350,000 will, will do these components in pieces, that means we're very conservative, but we gotta keep in mind that we have to run sewer all the way to the site in Phase Two, we have to put the bathrooms there. So if we discuss $350,000, $400,000, in my personal opinion, because of the new location and whatever comes with it is gonna cost more, will Mr. Dreath or the nonprofit organization be able to come up with funding to support an example of what, what I'm showing you here? And I hope that clarifies it, David.
It does, but, but I guess what I think we're voting on tonight is whether or not we're gonna continue to work with Mr. Dreath. And my...
That is correct.
And all the rest of that is, is something different. But my, just have my suggestion, he has a, his father-in-law's passed away. It certainly appears that he, he does not have the money to do it, but I do think that, you know, maybe publicly, and this is a public meeting that we're doing right now, is let's say, we definitely make a decision in the next meeting, and if he's not here, you know, we're just not gonna do it. In that way, it's, it's, you know, it's, we're giving him one more chance. Under the circumstances, you know, you know, let him come, you know, I, I wish it would have happened. I wish that we would have had the Miracle League, and it all would have happened, but it, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen, and I, I say, we're, we're not in that big a hurry to, two weeks won't make a that big a difference, especially if he's had a death in his family, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't wait, but that's just my suggestion.
Does council concur?
I concur with Mr. Coan, a second time tonight, so. Well, that's on a streak right there.
Mr. Morris, Mr. Head? Consensus on...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Dreath, it was my understanding that his father-in-law passed away in the last three months, but he was perfectly healthy and then passed, and in his email, he said that, you know, just basically that he'd been dealing with the loss of his father-in-law. Under those extreme circumstances, he wasn't ill, and that, you know, he hadn't received And that, you know, he hadn't received or heard anything on the funding to date.
Well, I'd like just to say, this is our public, publicly saying, let us know something by next Tuesday.
Might I suggest we table it for the next and instruct Patrick to send out a message to him that says we'll be voting on whether or not to continue with the Miracle League next week, next meeting? It'll be a final vote? Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, before we vote on tabling it in the next meeting, which I'm perfectly fine with, in a previous meeting, I had asked if we could get a conceptual drawing of the park with and without that particular feature. Is that still available by the next meeting?
We will make it available by the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. And consensus for tabling? Mike, you okay with that? Okay. Patrick?
We're fine.
Okay. We're fine? You don't need a motion, just a consensus to table it. All right, Kathy? Thank you. Next is the fire fee tax. Mr. Sedik, once again, this is for informational purposes?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give council and the public an update on where we at with fire tax, fire fees. And I did share with council that there was a deadline to get back with the county in regard to what funding methodology for us to choose. And recently, I've met with our new county manager, Mr. Watson, and I discovered that really, there isn't anything that we need to do right now since we are, we do have three out of the fire departments that serve our area. Both of them are tax-funded, not fee-funded. So that's good news that we don't have to get back to the county by the end of January 31st. We have all the time that we need. I've also discovered that whatever fire chief, Johnny Blythe, has been communicating with us, the county is also on the same page. They are encouraging and in favor of any proposal that work for the western side of Union County. And in addition to that, too, they have mentioned interest in being involved with whatever methodology Mr. Blythe proposed to council or the jurisdiction in this particular case to involve Stallings, Lake Park, Hembie Bridge, and Indian Trail. And the three fire departments that we're talking about right here is Baker's, Hembie Bridge, and Stallings. So we've met on numerous occasions, Jim and I, and Mr. Blythe kind of submitted some information to us. He does not have sort of the complete picture yet. We have asked for sort of like a summary or a small business plan that could give staff an idea about that final model and the methodology so we could go ahead and make a recommendation to council. So we're still working with Mr. Blythe on that. And some of the preliminary information that we ask for, like capital and operating cost or operating budget, debt service, what is the impact on the tax rate, and any fund balances that those three fire stations have, and grant money, et cetera, et cetera. I did learn that Johnny has gotten a chance to meet with Stallings and probably Lake Park. But what he would like to do, too, is get a chance to meet with our council. So I'll be reaching out to council to see if we could meet with Mr. Blythe two at a time, including the mayor, so he could go ahead and put before you that model that he's recommending. Some of the items that we have not received yet, that Johnny said, either we have to find somebody to help us with that, maybe consultant or Union County staff as an example, is this district that's going to compile the services of those three fire department. So there are some outstanding items out there. But the county, what I've learned from the county, that really, they do not have any preference to which model the town will select. But they made it clear to me that they like to be involved. Michael, all right, so that spreadsheet that you're looking at, Jim and I, we spent some time on that. And this is not different than the first spreadsheet that Assistant County Manager Michael shared with you guys and then also that Johnny Blythe is familiar with. Simply, what I want to show in this spreadsheet, if you look at the items that in green color, this reflects the tax district. And the ones that in black and red, it reflects the fee district. What I wanted to share right here is sort of like the same point Johnny Blythe is making and the same point that the county is familiar with, is if we look at the two results at the bottom, the percentages, that one of them that shows 38.79% and 56.5%, this is the percentage out of the total operating budget that the county is showing under the operating appropriation. They're showing a budget of $13,778,655. So if we look at what the tax district is, their operating budget, you could see it's at 56.5%. So that right there tells Jim and I and Johnny Blythe that our western part of the Union County is growing. They do have more fund balance than the rest of the fire department. If you look at the last column on the right, you could see that the tax district ended up with some fund balance. And simply, that's what I wanted to show, that yes, he is right. Western part of Union County is growing, generating more taxes, and tax and self-funded item, whether it has subsidy from Union County or not, is the right approach. So we just want to verify and kind of provide some data and documentation to show that, you know, we're moving in the right path. So I wanted to share that with council tonight. The last item I would like to mention about fire tax, fire fees, is that Johnny mentioned that it will take at least a year, year and a half to really implement the program. So if we decide, if council decide to move forward with self-funded, that's not going to happen overnight. And I think the county manager and his assistants shared with me yesterday that that could be a longer process. So we do have plenty of time to implement the program. So the last thing I'd like to mention is definitely, we're going to work hard with Johnny to come up with a plan that will include all the data in it, the limit of that district, and consensus from all the elected officials from all four jurisdictions. So this is just an update to council to let you know where we at, and hopefully, we'll keep you posted as we progress with Johnny and the county.
Thank you, Patrick. Bring some, item F, solid waste recycling. Mr. Sedik?
Yes, sir. And I...
Okay, this is also for informational purposes?
Yes, sir. I would like to say that, you know, I think everybody here, council and the public and the region and the nation, we're all trying to find a solution for the solid waste recycling issue that everybody's been facing. So the first thing I would like to say is that Michael and I, we kind of put a message out there to our residents just to let them know that the town is currently evaluating feasible alternatives and weighing environmental benefits with financial ones. We were also thinking about putting a survey out there to our residents. And we will definitely, before we put a survey out there, bring it before council just to get their comments about the survey. And we did put, Adam, Jim and I, we did put our solid waste vendor sort of on notice that we're not, we're going to take our time. We're going to do whatever it takes to find the ideal solution for the recycling problem. We're not going to jump out there and pay the $298,000 without collaborated efforts, you know, between him and us. We did meet with him today, and we made that very clear, that we've done a lot of research. I myself spent probably about three days trying to see what other jurisdiction in the United States did to resolve this recycling issue. And to be honest with you, I stopped when I reached the Mississippi River. So I kind of got enough information from the southeast on different methodologies, different things that jurisdictions are doing. So we did the research. We communicated with our vendor. And we have asked him to kind of team up with us to come up with solutions. Some of the questions that we asked him is plastic, glass, electronic, all that stuff. Are they vendors or end-users out there are using some of those items? Are those companies still profitable? Are they making money out of the items? Et cetera, et cetera. So we asked him to kind of do some work and come back to us so that way, we could decide, should we go ahead and create additional recycling centers? And it's okay, I'm jumping back and forth in here. Union County have one landfill, and they also have six recycling centers that distributed throughout the county. So one of the options that they're out there, should we go ahead and ask our residents to take sorted materials to those six locations? Or maybe do we need to add more locations in Indian Trail to make it, you know, less burden on our residents? Some of the things that we thought about, a lot of European countries and some jurisdiction in America, what they do is they provide the residents with four different compartments, or what we call them bins. They're small bins, one of them for paper and cardboard, which is still marketable and can be recycled. Electronics is for environmental issues. Glass, also, there's some companies out there that are still using glass for fiberglass, shingles, et cetera, et cetera. So if we want to go that route, then there's going to be some cost to provide those bins so we could help our residents. This is one out of 20 options that we could put before council in the near future. So all what I'm saying is that the process of making a decision, we're not going to be able to come in probably until we have all the information from the end-users, all the information from our vendor, also not to forget Union County. Union County also, the last conversation I had with the new county manager yesterday, he said that he has an appointment with Public Works and Solid Waste. And the intent of those two meetings is to further the discussion about solution for the recycling. And he was positive. He wanted to kind of work with the rest of the jurisdiction in the area. So again, we would like, the town and staff would like to wait until we communicate back with Union County, especially because they have a landfill and six recycling centers. So we're not going to exclude them from the process. And we communicated to the vendor today that they're going to be a team player in making that final decision. Another item where we could work together on that, I know Mr. Head right here, he has a meeting where all the elected officials meet once a month. They've already met with Stallings, and I'm not sure who else they met with. But that could help us to kind of come up with, get more input from elected officials. I found out today that our vendor has 13,000 residents in Union County that they serve beside Stallings and Indian Trail. And so this vendor is all over Union County. So what we made it clear to our vendor today is that it will be worth it to work with the 13,000 residents, work with Stallings, work with Indian Trail, and have a comprehensive plan rather than just say, I have a cost, I have to put up with that, and not communicate and work with us. So we're going to continue working with the vendor. Definitely, we'll keep Stallings on board because they do have a similar contract to our contract. Education, most of the research that we did and communicating with the vendor, we found out that education is a big part of it. And the way we benefiting from education is the amount of contamination in the material. And that's why a lot of end-users right now having issues when you take that recycling material and put it on the conveyor and try to separate the items, they're finding out that that contaminant level is too high that they end up not being able to use some of that material. So our communication director right here is going to work with us to do whatever we can to provide the educational material for our residents. Some areas, too, we found out that there is cost, there is additional cost for customers. So that's something we will be putting before council. Some jurisdictions out there, they just raise $8 a month to make up for that additional cost. Also, we did have some savings the first year with this new contract, savings of approximately $114,000 that we could use some of that cost to distribute it among four years to kind of make up for the additional cost. One of the research items that we ran into, an advice that because this market is changing and it could change in the future, not to have long-term contracts. So if we want to have future contract with solid waste company, it might not be a four-year or five-year. Maybe it could be beneficial if it's two years. And a couple items about the end-users is, you know, we need to examine new ways to make sure that whatever decision we make, those end-users still have their businesses become more successful rather than choose an alternative that could put them out of business because they're not making money out of the recycling materials. But definitely, I'm asking council today just to give us more time to get the county engaged, for our vendor to bring us more information, to communicate more with other jurisdiction, and to allow Mr. Head and other elected officials to have some input. So if council is okay with that, we will continue bringing more info. And hopefully, we could come back to council the next meeting with options and recommendation that council could make a decision and give us some direction.
Thank you, Patrick. Mr. Morris?
Patrick, have you reached out to any of the other municipalities that don't contract with Waste Connections?
I did...
To find out if they're in the same situation, if they've gotten an increased letter?
Well, I did, we had a managers' meeting, Stallings, myself, Monroe, and Matthews. And Matthews, they do have another vendor, but they're facing the same thing. And Monroe also, they do have similar contract like us where you have a recycling bin and trash bin. And really, I don't think, Alex is in the audience here today, it gets to a point that they can't tell sometimes whether the material and the trash are mixed together. Or I don't think Monroe were able to share with us. The manager was not up to speed on sharing with us information in regard to how successful the current program is. But definitely, all four of us were facing the same recycling issue. So no additional cost was shared with us from Monroe or Matthews. But Matthews shared with us that there... But Matthews shared with us that they're having some issues with their vendor too. So, and that could not be related to recycling, but we're all, let me summarize it and say that we're all facing the same issue. But I would say that working with, regionally, with the jurisdiction in the area could be very, very beneficial because that could put also some pressure on the current vendor to step to the bar and work closely with the jurisdiction to resolve that issue. So I know I did not respond to your questions because not enough information was shared with me in regard to recycling in that meeting.
Just one thing, there were three ladies at work who were talking about that very problem. I think one of them lives in the north of Charlotte, the other one lives in Indianland. And they were, they were customers, residents, and they were experiencing the same thing too as well. Some of them citing the obvious reason behind that, which is the reduction of the plastics imports or, you know, recyclables into China. So I think it's, even if somebody doesn't experience it now, it's something that's coming eventually, which is that we're kind of the ones bearing that first.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. And the last item I'd like to mention is that we made it very clear to the vendor that the process is going to take some times for us to make a decision. And I spoke on behalf of other jurisdiction too. So we don't want that cash register to start ringing 1st of January as he brought it before us. So again, we need to team up on that, and we just told him that we're going to take our town with the county and the jurisdiction to come up with the best solution, and we would like him to be heavily involved in every step we take.
Well, David had his hand up. Go ahead.
Jerry, there's been several articles in the newspaper, in The Observer. Tiga K, I think, is talking about getting rid of their recycling altogether. And if I'm not mistaken, I saw like on NBC, not NBC, ABC with David Muir, whatever, it was on, it was, I mean, it's a, it's a problem the whole United States is having. It's not, and, you know, some of the, some of the things that I've seen on it is whether or not, and we'd hate to see it, because I think we all have been brought up through our lives thinking that, you know, you recycle bottles because it's, because you make more plastic out of it. You know, we put them in a trash can, they take them and they melt them and they make more bottles out of it. And they take the Coke bottles and they make more Coke bottles out of it. But I don't think it's that simple, is it, Patrick? I don't, I don't think it's that way anymore. I didn't realize it, but it seems like a lot of our recycles were going to China. And, you know, it seems kind of crazy that you can put a bunch of recycles and send it on a boat all the way to China, but they were actually paying for it. And I don't quite understand all the tariff thing, the tariffs and stuff that are going on, but I think that may have something to do with it also, is the tariffs that were going back and forth. And China's just kind of put their foot down on it and said, listen, we don't want it anymore. So now there's, and I could be wrong by what I'm saying, but that's my understanding of it, and there's just nowhere for it to go anymore. And, you know, people are talking about putting it back in landfills and that type thing. So anyway, did the, did the, did the garbage company gives any kind of time limit? And I know they can't really give us a limit, but did they, did we have a timeframe that they want to know something back? Because I know if they're coming to us, they're losing money, or they're going to lose money. And, you know, I know, I know when you sign a contract, but if everybody's having this problem, then I'm not saying we have to do something, but eventually, somebody has to, or you just switch, you won't be able to switch to another garbage company because they're going to have the same problem as what their, that company's having. And we got the lowest rate the last time from them, so what would we get from somebody else? You know, it gets a little more complicated than you might think. But, you know, also, I think we ought to be, you know, kind of open to helping too. You know, you don't want to just turn your back on somebody and say, you know, if we all own a business and you have, you have something come up that's out of the clear blue, that's out of your control, and all businesses are going to be the same, then you want to work with them. And I'd just like to see us work with whoever, and if, you know, you can get it less from a different garbage company, you do that. But I'd just like to see us try to work with what we've got. But it is a problem throughout the whole country.
Mr. Head?
You mentioned the 13,000 residents. Are they within the, another jurisdiction, or are they within Union County?
They are scattered-
Scattered around?
Mainly, I would say, the western part of Union County.
Okay.
I'd just like to add one thing, I did speak with one of the county commissioners-
Yes, sir.
And they're open to being involved in this also.
And just to, David, yes, we need to work with them, because if we get another company, you're going to see that cost upfront, and you're going to have to pay it, because it's a national issue. I mean, we did, to the point, we shared with them, we said, Mark, we would like to work with you, and we would like you to work with us. I mean, one of the options that we have out there too is start our own solid waste department, but you're still going to be facing the recycling issue. So I think having the six centers, Union County landfill, and we put that before him too. Right now, what he does is, he takes his material to a transfer station, then from that transfer station, he takes it to another location 26 miles away. So we put before him today that, look, the landfill is about 13 miles away from the transfer station, so you're cutting your transportation cost by almost, let's say, a third, not a half, because it doesn't work that way. So these are the items that we put before him, that it's going to take some times for us to make a decision. We would like you to work with us, look at all these options, and please educate us more about the end user. What materials is still out there can be recycled, which one we're making some money off? And the last item is, we did propose to him that, give us the savings if we reduce the number of trips a month. Right now, they pick up recycling material twice a month, and he gave us some numbers, about once a month, and I think we could be saving 62 cents per ton, right, Adam? That's the number that he shared with us today? Per house, that's right. So that's another savings that we're looking at, 62 cents per house, that would be per pickup too, right? Right? That's right. So I think he's working with us, and we're going to continue working with him. And we're looking at every alternative that's out there, and we'll definitely come back to council with the most ideal one that works for us, him, Union County, and the other jurisdiction. So that's how we're approaching this issue.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. That brings us to the Sheridan Neighborhood Contractor Roadway Improvement Settlement. Patrick?
Is this one under Mr. Hansinger?
Todd? Sorry, Todd.
Mayor, Council, we just wanted to give you an update on, my mic's way too close, get you an update on the process of getting these bonds to do this work. Again, y'all passed a resolution back in late August to pretty much proceed and move forward and getting those funds. And so what we've been doing since then is, we went back out there, got a cost estimate of what we felt like would take to get these improvements done per our standards. With the advice of town attorney, we, once we got that engineering cost estimate, we decided to go out and do an informal bid for the work, being that it's under $500,000. So what we did that, we moved forward with that, got two bids. We basically have a verbal agreement right now with the contractor to move forward. Once we come to an agreement with the bank, which has ownership of the bond, so at this point right now, we have a agreement that the attorney has read, and we are currently right now going back with them to finalize that agreement, if you, if you're okay with moving forward. But again, we just wanted to give you an update on that. And again, we've got a, we've got a cost, contractor's willing to do the work. As long as the bank signs off on the agreement per our requirements, we'll get a contract together with the lowest prospective bidder, and then we'll move forward with the work in probably March.
Mr. Morse?
Is the cost less than the bond?
That's correct, yes. It's about $100,000 less than the bond.
And also, the cost does include 10% contingency?
Thank you, Todd.
All right. Thank you.
Brings us to Sagecroft Offer to Purchase and Contract, First Amendment. Karen?
This is a, we were approached by Sagecroft. If y'all remember, a developer was interested in acquiring a piece of town land for its sewer line and BNP. And we have agreed to sell it. After going through the process, they've asked for an extension of time to close that while they're conducting their due diligence. There's no issues with it. On the legal side, we're happy to do it. Document's been drafted, and it's waiting your approval, but it's simply, the terms remain exactly the same, except for we have extended the time to close the actual real estate transaction while they continue and finish up their due diligence.
Okay, so we need a motion on that?
Correct, yes, please. Motion to approve the amendment, the first amendment to the contract.
If there's no discussion, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Cohen's made a motion to approve, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to property foreclosure, 411 Clearwater Drive. Mr. Wadowitz?
Actually, sorry, I should have caught this earlier. We're going to actually move that to closed session.
Okay.
Under real estate.
All right, that's so deleted, so moved. That brings us to the Reliable Growth Meeting. I couldn't read my own writing.
All right. Well, let's see, we've added another topic, solid waste. So we'll need to get some more information there. One of the, the thing that I wanted to bring up was, in talking to the other municipalities, we all seem to have a similar issue in that the, you know, one of the things that, and right now, we're dealing with Stallings, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, and ourselves, and Lake Park. One of the things that we talked about doing is, when we're developing in areas that are close to border, boundary lines of the next town, is to give them the information of what we're doing. Now, it's, the problem that has arisen, and I guess has been here for a while, as I understand it, is that Union County does not, has not done that with us. So what we are going to do, and I just wanted to bring it up before council, is to look at ways of maybe extending an invitation to the Union County Commissioners in some way to, so that we get some advance notice of some of the projects they're looking at that border our boundaries, and in some cases that, with donut holes, are actually inside our, inside our boundaries, but yet not under Indian Trail, they're under Union County. So that's one of the things that we're going to bring up at the next meeting, but I just wanted to let everybody be aware. And again, this, this committee was formed really to bring everyone in, and really was formed because of the issues that some of us saw on CRTPO, that where Union County, all municipalities don't vote as a block at times for road construction. And if we don't have Union County's vote, it's kind of hard to get anything accomplished. So just an update, if there's any discussion any further that you need to know, and then I guess I will get with Patrick and some of the other council members and see where we can go with solid waste as well. Any questions?
No, thank you. Oh, Patrick, did you have something?
Yes, I do concur with Mr. Head, and one of the topics that I communicated with our new county manager was the developments that Mr. Head was talking about. Currently, some of the things, Michael, that we've done so far is, Todd, Rox and I, we're working closely with their planning department and their traffic department to look at TIAs and also look at a plan review. So we reach an agreement that we'll review those developments together and also look at the impact of the traffic studies together. So that's two items that I think we accomplished, and storm drainage was another one that we discussed with them. But the two, the new county manager was really in favor of this, and he would like to kind of expand on this program.
That brings us to new business, item A, Sardis Road Roundabout Acquisition Resolution. That would be you, Karen?
Yes. So the town has engaged a right-of-way acquisition company called Professional Property Services. They performed the work needed to acquire the real estate needed to construct the Sardis Road, Sardis Church Road Roundabout. The way that the system works is that they will take, to the extent they could just reach a contract with, or an agreement with the people who own adjoining property, they'll cut, they'll do the deal. Occasionally, the town is going to have to condemn property when they're either you can't get an agreement with the owner, or there's some complicated title structure behind the parcel that's being acquired. We have come to that point right now, so there is an HOA. In order to construct the roundabout, there is a small portion of an HOA-owned parcel. Those are much easier acquired by condemnation, and so what we're asking tonight is that the town council approve that Indian Trail move forward with condemning a small portion of the HOA-owned property in front of the Arbor Glen subdivision. And so if y'all agree with that, then we'll take the next steps to actually get that property acquired and owned by the town and NCDOT for purposes of constructing that roundabout.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we need a motion. Go ahead, Ms. Cohen.
Several questions. And you may have said it, if you did say it, I apologize, you talked so fast, and there was a train coming back here at the same time. To condemn property, and I know where that intersection is, are they just not willing to sell it, or?
No, in this particular instance, the property is owned by an HOA. And so as normal HOAs, you need to have something like two-thirds signatures of all property owners, and that's impossible to get.
I can understand that.
Yeah, and so when, so the easiest way to, for the town or the, and the DOT to acquire that property is to go ahead and condemn it, and then we get clean title. The way that the process works is that we will notify the HOA that we're going to go through the process, we have gotten an appraisal for the property. In 30 days, we'll file the condemnation proceeding along with a check, do it to the court, the check will be distributed to the HOA, and then they can figure out amongst themselves how to distribute that money, or if they're just going to use it to fix up the entry. But it gets clean title to the DOT and to the town for purposes of getting that property.
And on that particular piece of property, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but it's probably a useless, when I say useless, it, nobody can build on it, nobody can do anything on it, it's just there. I mean, it's, it's just-
Correct. Yeah, and some of it, however, I believe this particular parcel, we might be taking some landscaping and the sign for the neighborhood. And so the value that they will get back is the value of that landscaping and the signage.
So they're going to get their value back out of it?
Yes, they get the value, absolutely. We, you condemn that market value.
Are they okay with what we're doing? I mean, are they, been notified and?
Yeah, but we're, I actually was in touch with the attorney for the HOA today on our first conversation, there's more to come, but my understanding is that this is considered a friendly condemnation. So we just have to go through the steps. Friendly, you know, it's litigation, so you never know, but right now, we believe it's going to be a friendly, easy process.
Well, that makes all difference, it's friendly.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know, we, we, I attended with Chris, the gentleman, our real estate agent, an HOA board meeting with them, and discussed this matter before we went to this, through this process. And basically, really, we are taking a few trees, but basically, all they have is a drainage ditch along the roadway right there. And what we're doing is we're putting curb, we're putting sidewalk, so they're gonna have connection from their interest drive all the way through the intersection, crosswalk towards the park, so I mean, they've got connectivity once all these improvements are done.
It's gonna be better.
So it's gonna be a better process, yes. That's correct.
So we need a motion on the resolution?
Right.
Motion?
I'll make the, the motion for the Sardis Roundabout Acquisition.
Ms. McIntyre's made the motion to approve the Sardis Road Roundabout Acquisition Resolution. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to Town Property Surplus Resolution. Karen, you're busy tonight.
Busy, busy. All right, so the town has received an offer to purchase a parcel downtown. What's in front of you tonight is a resolution declaring that property as surplus, which allows the town to then sell it, and also authorizing the sale pursuant, pursuant to the offer received, and opening up what's called the upset bid process, which is the mandatory process the town must go through when it's selling town-owned property. I'm happy to explain the upset bid process if anyone has questions about that, or answer more questions about this particular resolution.
Ms. McIntyre?
I know the property you're speaking of, are there any outstanding debts or loans or mortgages on that property?
My understanding is no.
All right, so it's free and clear, town owns, all right.
Any other questions?
That's, that's my only question.
Patrick?
I'd like to add that the three interested parties, in addition to the one that submitted a bid, I received one today, and I communicated with two the last three weeks. So to add to what Karen was saying is, that will help us get more money for the property, because if they wanna overbid, the original bidder is gonna increase by 10% every time they do that.
So the stipulation is, has to be a minimum of 10%?
A minimum of 5% increase, 5%. 5% over the original ask, and then they are required to submit a 5% down payment deposit when they do make the, for the offer to be legitimate.
So when we did this, we put up, we given a specific amount that we expected to receive in terms of an offer, right? Wasn't just something that they felt, it was fair market value? Was that what it was?
That's, my understanding is, these are unsolicited offers, and so what happens is a unsolicited, a person came to town and said, "I'd like to buy this property from you," and made an offer to purchase. That is what's in front of you today. I believe that that offer is close to fair market value right now, if not exactly our appraised value.
The property was appraised at $340,000. The first offer put $300,000. But in the past, when we discussed the value of the property, there was, there is an amount of $75,000 floating for removing of the three buildings. If you wanna go out there and remove the three buildings with the basement and cap the utilities, that costs $75,000. So they kinda disregarded that, they didn't subtract it from the appraised value, and they submitted $300,000. So I think we're in good shape in that area.
So you're looking for the resolution?
Yes, and so what, what we're asking is that the, the council will approve the, the resolution declaring that the property is surplus, and authorizing the sale of the property pursuant to the upset bid statutory process.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the resolution declaring certain property a surplus and authorizing the sale of certain real property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute
Okay, Mr. Morse has made that motion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the Stinson Crossing Rezoning. Rox, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for hearing this evening to discuss kind of a project from 2006 referred to as Stinson Crossings. Just to give you a quick location overview, the image that you're seeing there is located right at the intersection of Seacrest Shortcut in Unionville Indian Trail Road. I think many people in our community and yourselves are familiar with that. This was a conditional use district approval back in 2006. It's case number 2005-003. As you can see in the image, which is relatively current, there's been no development activity on that property over the past 12-plus years. It's currently a zone general business district. We are unaware of any project vesting for this and consider it an expired permit, if you will. So we are coming before council to ask that you initiate a rezoning of this subject property to an appropriate district. We will come back to the planning board and council with a proposed district for the property, but we are asking the council to take initiation action tonight. This is not reaching a final decision on the rezoning, it's just an initiation step. And so I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, you can go. Why?
Well, the project has, the project has expired, and so our ordinances state that applicants have roughly two years to apply for building permits after their projects are approved, in order to keep them, quote, vested or, you know, active, if you will. That has not occurred on this property, nor has there been any investment, that we're aware of, any investment in the property where they might have other types of vesting available to them. So what we would like to do is go ahead and formally remove that conditional use district approval from the property, so it's no longer there. And that way, that creates an easier opportunity for the current property owner or a future property owner to re-study the property and come up with the best poss, you know, a, a future project at some later date. And to do that, you need to go through the rezoning process.
And what will it be rezoned back to, or to residential?
There's a couple, there's a couple options to it. Now, we don't have a specific proposal for you this evening. We will, when, when we complete the application for it on behalf of the council. Couple trains of thought could be what you just stated, the property was zoned residential before 2006, so you could give it a, a residential zoning classification that was comparable to what it was 12 years ago. We could also just provide it with the, like a lower intensity commercial classification, like neighborhood business district. There's a couple different options we, we could go forward. This isn't, this, this property is in the Seacrest Shortcut study area, and so the area, this particular parcel amongst some others was designated as potential future commercial. So there's a couple options. We wanna kinda chew on those a little bit before we put together the, the application for it, but we would just like to not only brief you on this project or this former project, but also, you know, kinda study the options a little more before we put forward a recommendation.
So would it be wise to sort of, as we're going for this right now, to bring it back to, or bring it in compliance with the Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan? Would that be the direction you think that we will end up going?
That's certainly a viable direction, is to give it, yeah, so this, this center, this property, again, was envisioned to be a commercial shopping center.
Yeah.
I think way back in the day, it was envisioned that Harris Teeter was gonna build a, a neighborhood shopping center there. That obviously did not happen for a variety of reasons. So if, if you wanted to put the lens on, let's put something on there that's, that's consistent with our, our plans for the area, then you might say, let's give it a low intensity commercial classification, and I said, I'm just shooting out from the hip, neighborhood business district. And then if someone wants to do something bigger and better than that, they can always come back before council and, and, and increase that subject to council approval through the rezoning process. So that would be one kind of train of thought in that. And the other is, like we just talked about, well, you know, it was residential 12 years ago, let's just go ahead and revert it back to that, and, you know, so a couple different options. Let us study those, and we'll come forward with a recommendation, but not to a planning board, but yourself. But we're, we're gonna, that's exactly what we're gonna do, is weigh the best option for, in, in those scenarios.
So you're not requiring any action from us at this point in time?
I'm asking the council to just kind of initiate staff putting together a rezoning application for this property. Again, the application will have, will, will have a specific district, we just don't have it for you this evening. Again, we just wanted to study that a little more, so we feel confident in, in what district we propose. So I'm asking for initiation action from the council.
Mr. Morse?
What is the, what's the taxes on that particular property as it's zoned now?
So in terms of, I don't know the taxes that are being collected. I believe the assessed value per acre is roughly around $200,000.
Well, if, if there is a rezon, will that affect how much the owner will pay in taxes at that point?
It would, it, it could affect the assessed value, and then that in turn would affect the taxes collected.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There's no further discussion? We need a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Cohen, sorry.
You know, I saw that property go up, you know, when I was, I was living there, and we were gonna get a Harris Teeter there and the whole nine yards. And I think what you're saying is, is, is kinda being, it's gonna be in limbo, really. You're letting the landowner kind of figure out, and, you know, what, what we come up with as the town to put whatever. I think that that's probably one of the more expensive pieces of property anyway. I mean, it's me thinking, it's in an ideal situation, area. I would think it's the perfect location for what they had there, a shopping center. But it's not my land, so it, it, you know, it's not my decision what I wanna do, you know, what's not what David wants to do with it, it's what they wanna do with it. But it, it's a perfect, you know, we always thought it was gonna be a shopping center. I think everybody that lives over there thought it was gonna be a Harris Teeter and looked forward to it. We were told that for years. But, you know, I, I guess what you're saying is, is this is a, this is gonna be a limbo thing. It's gonna be a, and then at that time, council can approve it or not approve, whatever they wanna put on it. So it really, we're not, we're not making any decision anyway. We're not, we're not asking you to put anything on it, or, you know, it, it, council's just saying, I guess we're gonna take the, the business part off of it, is that what, what you're saying?
Yes, I, I think, I'm gonna go, jump back to one of the first things you said in terms of the limbo status. I think that's a great way to characterize this, is that with an expired approval for the property, the developers and, or the property owners in a kind of a unusual situation, and what can I do with my property? So what we're, we're trying to do is recognize that and take, ask the council to take a rezoning action at a later date to put some, you know, land, you know, some development rights on the property, and so get it out of that limbo status. So I think you characterized it very well, and we agree with your assessment that, that, yeah, commercials, or ideally even mixed-use development would be really a great opportunity at that site. The expressway exit ramp, entrance ramp is right around the corner from there, and so we think, we're hopeful that'll be a catalyst for this site and others around it. And so that's what we wanna do, is go ahead and remove this kind of limbo status with this expired approval, and give it some zoning that is, is actually usable. Again, they can always come back to council and ask for something, something different.
Can, can the council give you a recommendation as to, I can speak for myself, can, while we, we, you know, take it off, or take it off from its limbo stage, can we give you, you are the planning, planning department, a recommendation that we would like to see commercial there?
Absolutely.
Cause I mean, it would be good for it to be used as was advertised back in 2006, meaning some, some form of commercial. That would be kinda welcome, I think, over on that side of 74. Or on the other side of the bypass, whichever way you look at it.
Understand. No, we're happy to take that feedback in.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So that I understand this correctly, the town has approached the property owner? Or did the property owner approach the town?
Oh, the town has approached the property owner. We, we engaged in some conversations during the Seacrest Shortcut community meeting process with the owner of the property, Ray Lee Miller, just trying to find, you know, to just not only share the information about the study, but also see what their plans may be for the property. Again, it's a pretty well-known, you know, piece of property. We didn't get necessarily a clear picture or any kind of definitive picture, but I, the sense was maybe that, that something, you know, commercial-ish, you know, was still maybe desired, and we notified the owner of this, of our desire to go before council at this meeting to initiate, you know, kind of a rezoning for the property and to kind of remove it from this limbo status. Unfortunately, you know, we never got any follow-up from the property owner. We tried to reach out to them on the phone as well. We wanna continue to do that, to try to meet with them and, and bring them into this process, but we just haven't done that, haven't been successful in doing that to date. But we included in your packet a copy of the letter that we sent to Ray Lee Miller.
And that was sent on the eight, or the 12th?
Of December, yes, sir.
Counsel? Action?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Do you wanna, you wanna consensus?
If you could just, yeah, go ahead and initiate the rezoning.
Yeah, I'd say go ahead and initiate it.
All right.
I mean, that's what I've been working.
We know, thank you very much.
Let's take an official vote.
Yeah, let's take, let's, let's do an official vote. So I wanna make a motion that we are gonna instruct the planning department to remove the Stinson Crossing rezoning that has expired from limbo, and sort of put it into a stage where it can be in the future, sort of after consultation with the owner and so forth, be brought back to something that is more desirable there, or is accepted there.
Ms. McIntyre's made the motion to remove the conditional use district that's expired, and initiate a rezoning on a Stinson Crossing property. All in favor? Opposed? The record's stand, all were in favor. Mr. Morse opposing? Motion passes, three to one.
Thank you.
That brings us to introduction to the fiscal year 1920 budget. Mr. Wadawitz, Mr. Sedik, this is for informational?
Sure, it is informational, and it won't take but
It's the first step.
But a couple of minutes. The last budget, we did offer a budget book, and simply what it has in it, sort of line items of, of every budget line items, we had a message, and we also acronyms. But this year, we're, we're gonna take a bit different approach to it. We're gonna add, we're gonna consider economic forecast, anything that, any impacts from the market, we're gonna take that into consideration if it has any impact on our sales tax. Also, we're gonna look at mandates as an example. This might not be a perfect example, stormwater mandate by the state after the storm that we ran into. Any other impact, whether the regional, national, one we just talked about, which is the solid waste. So we will have a section in the budget that talks about every one of these items. There will also be minor changes in operation to improve things, rather than, we just want council to be aware of any changes that we make that will improve our operation. Technology, cost, and the way it is dynamic, we, we might be approaching council and the public for, you know, maybe a different budget than what we had last year, and also including our citizens in our budget schedule that, Michael, do you have that slide available? Simply, this is what we're gonna provide council for any comments. This is, this schedule is used by probably most of the municipalities in North Carolina, and also approved by the school of government. So we will make copy available to council for any input. Not much different from last year, but the community meeting will be, there will be one, and board retreat, that will be the first meeting. We'll try to have something end of January, if it works with council, just to kinda get Couple more items. We wanna make sure that the budget does not sound like a year-to-year incremental budget. You know, an example of that, you know, we take our budget, we don't make too many changes to it, and then we say we're increasing it by 10% or 5% per line item. That is something that we're, we're not planning on doing. We wanna make sure that it does consider all these items that we talked about, and it's not in isolation, and it does reflect future goals, especially when we have multi-year projects. We will be including plans, strategic plans, that do not have conflicting priorities, and what I mean by that is funding, or something that cannot be accomplished. We, we will start the process, and I think Jim started it right now, and I started We will start the process, and I think Jim started it right now, and I started it on my, on my part. We will have a meeting with the department directors. We will set some deadlines. The budget forms are available. It'll be a top-down approach. What I mean by that, after we receive priorities from council, we will move with those priorities just to make sure that we are in line. We will set the tone of what we can afford, we will not, what we cannot afford, and items like that with staff. Also, the budget will take into consideration status quo. And what I mean by that is that, you know, changes, minimum changes to achieve services, and also we want to be more efficient and cost-saving. We will have a strategy. It will definitely, will be political, financial weight in it. And the expectation for the level of involvement will be defined. We will make that schedule as I mentioned. And one last item, this year, we will provide, you know, three, four, or five-page manual that kind of describe all the items that we'll include in the, in the budget this year. Like when are the kickoff, you know, kickoff memo, budget calendar, staff directory, organizational chart, cost estimate, vehicle request, if we have any reduction, and some items in details as to training, travel, operation, contractual services, et cetera, et cetera. But as I mentioned, we've taken a different approach to it this year by providing more information. The tables will not change much, except what costs more and what costs less. And definitely, we will, we will include stakeholders like the county and also CRTPO. We will work very closely with council member Morris and McIntyre or Mr. Head when it comes to cost that we're going to have to overshare in cost for neighborhood streets or any other projects, whatever our share, 20%, 30%. Definitely will share that with you, make sure that CRTPO are up to speed. And also will probably rely on your help to help us kind of get some funding from CRTPO. Todd and I, we just recently reviewed long-term transportation plan that, plan that it shows Indian Trail streets, what cross-sections, how wide they are, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to share that with you, and we'll look forward to it, and we'll keep council and, and our residents up to speed on, as we move forward with the budget.
Thank you, Patrick.
I've got one. It just dawned on me. I looked at, you know, the audit. I know we contracted with this auditing firm for how long?
Three years so far, sir.
Just completed a third year, Mike.
Okay, is it a five-year?
Three-year, but two-year extension.
Two-year extension, okay. Extension's automatic.
Is the extension automatic in the contract with them, Jim?
I'll try to contract and be coming for your approval.
We will go ahead and check and see if there is an extension, Mr. Head. In regard to the audit, we pushed them hard last year, and I think we received it, what, a couple months? When did we receive it? October?
About two months back.
Right, and so the recommendation by the school of government is really to get it around three months before the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, I think during last year's budget season, we talked about the length of terms for annual audits. And the recommendation I always hear is anywhere from usually three to five years. And I just want to make sure we're, we're on that and that we're okay with where we're at. It's always a good thing to, to kind of move around audits so that familiarity is not always the best thing.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to NC DNR Sediment and Erosion Control Plan Review Services. Mr. Sadek?
Okay, this is a quick item. We did share with council in the past that we are looking into taking this task away from North Carolina DNR. Simply, the task will allow us to inspect erosion and sediment control. We'll be able to review the plans instead of waiting for North Carolina DOT to do their part. We could review our part of the plans and also this, do this task. In addition to that, we will be able to generate some fees that will help us and increase our revenue. That would be for both the engineering and the planning department. This process will take approximately three months. They are willing to give us a training session. We could send our stormwater people up there, Todd and his engineers. They will give us their guidelines, give us, give us a training session. And after that, we will come back to council and advise accordingly. But I think Todd right now is working on the ordinance, and we will be bringing this before you. And as soon as you vote on that ordinance, that will allow us to work closely with them and be able to get that certification and start doing the work ourselves.
Mr. Morris?
Is there a chance that there's increased liability if we take this over from DNR?
There is always liability in any work we do, but I think, I think my opinion is it'll help us better that way because we will be reducing liability out there because we're getting the chance to review the plan, the site plan, and also review the stormwater. And also, rather than relying on DNR to come in from Statesville, Todd, or Morrisville, we are here locally. And I know some of you have been familiar with some of the storm energy issues that we have on site sometimes. That will allow us to respond in about 10 to 15 minutes and be out there and make recommendation or require the developer or the contractor to make necessary repairs. So to answer your question, Mr. Moore, I think in my personal opinion, it will reduce liability and then bring in liability.
Good, thank you.
Okay, do you need a motion on this?
No, sir. The only time we need motion on this is when we bring the ordinance back.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. That brings us to the manager's update. Sir, your center stage again.
Sardis, Sardis Roundabout, I know Karen and Todd covered that. I did have a conversation with the county manager. And he is going to look into, he's going to discuss this with Dr. Hohlehan and see if there is an opportunity to reduce the real estate acquisition cost and kind of put it back in the projects and provide it to the school in improvements to that way. We kind of rolled the money in the projects, but I learned from Karen today that there is a statute, a very strict one.
If you want to comment on that, Karen?
On the county versus the school in regard to
Oh, it's not even, yes, it's the constitution of North Carolina. So the schools are not allowed to donate property pursuant to the North Carolina constitution. So there's ways to work around it, but that is a very strict, strict constitutional standard. So again, we can work around it at some level, but they are not allowed to donate.
If it was, if it was town and county, sometimes you could put a dollar for 50 years or something like that. But because it's a school, I think we're not allowed to do that. First Avenue, staff is preparing a stormwater report, and actually, I'm sorry, the stormwater report, staff is already preparing one for Mrs. Howe to bring before council. That's required by the bylaws. I'm not sure if it's been done the last couple of years, but we're picking up on that right now. First Avenue, we did authorize our consultant to start the pump, pond design, so we're moving forward on that. Indian Trail Park, this is the neighborhood that no stormwater was completed off of Manuel Wood for the last 15 years. We did receive the study. We're in the process of reviewing that and communicating with the, with the consultant on what improvements to be done. Another exciting area with other projects is we're moving on the environmental part for both Indian Trail projects, uptown projects, and the Greenway. And in addition to that, we're working on real estate acquisitions for the Greenway. Another thing that we started this year that has not been, has not been done probably for the last five or six years, Todd, is we did send letters to all the owners of any BMPs, BMPs or ponds that exist within the town. And this process will require each owner, whether HOA or commercial site, to hire a PE to investigate the ponds and make sure that they are in good standing. And that will also, every time, every time we review one location or one site, we generate approximately $300 for the engineering department. So that's another revenue that we did not, did not have in the past, so we're going to add it and we will show it as a revenue in the budget. Last item, I did meet with UNCC yesterday in regard to our training. So what we're trying to do there is for our directors and staff and myself, rather than each one of us driving the car and go to Chapel Hill and spend two, three days to save some money on traveling and lodging. UNCC is willing to work with us to come up with a program that will be tailored for our staff. So I think that's a very exciting item, and this will be not at UNCC campus, that will be at the campus downtown where many, you know, professionals go there, and this is a nighttime deal. And I think we'll be saving some money there, too. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor, unless council has any questions for me.
You're good. That brings us to council comments.
Mr. Head?
I was thinking this, this, this last couple of weeks, thinking back to when I was, was working and always dreaded going back to work. I don't know if anybody else had that problem, but you know, you, you come off a good holiday with family and all, and then you, then you get back to the grind. Well, I'm still working, but the, the gentlemen, the women that I'm working with, it's so much easier to deal with that, you know, it's a pleasure coming back to work, to have a staff like we do that, that is so good to us and to the town. It's really, I thank my fellow council members for all the work that they, they do. Because it was a pleasure to come back tonight. And a lot different than, than having to hit the old millstone or grindstone. So again, thanks to them, thanks to staff. We say it all the time, but we really mean it. It was a good year. We're looking for another good year and wish everybody a good year, and please drive home safely. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Oh, thank you. My comments will be brief. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for all of you who came out this evening. Hopefully you drive home safe, and that's, that's all I have right now.
Mary Alvarez?
Couple of quick things. I attended a meeting on Friday with county commissioners and representatives from Stallings, Monroe, Chamber of Commerce, and DOT in regards to 74, an item that was brought before the council, renaming it Business 74, is opposed. And I voiced the council's opposition to business and the reasons why people avoid them like the plague. Everyone there seemed to agree with that. The problem wasn't renaming it business. The problem is the Turnpike Authority is refusing to acknowledge where businesses are. No signage indicating where hotels will be, where the ICE Center will be, where our parks will be, where any businesses in Monroe would be. The only one getting a sign will be the hospital. They say North Carolina does not provide for that on their toll roads. So we will be meeting again to propose a few other items, one of them being the blue attraction signs, letting people know which exits are for gas. Because if you're from out of town, you're getting on in Stallings, and you're going to bypass the ICE Center, our parks, everything in Indian Trail. Obviously, Hilltop Restaurant was very concerned about being bypassed. And any gas stations, and before you know it, you're in Marshville, which has absolutely at this time, nothing but a gas station and a Burger King and maybe a Wendy's. So I will keep everybody informed. The county commissioners and all involved would like council to be involved in that, too, when they come up with a few proposals for that. Just a suggestion for Patrick, maybe the council, maybe once or twice a year, if we can invite Pat Kaelin to give an update on the chamber and new businesses throughout the county and what she sees coming down the track, something quick and easy to work with her. And the last item was I attended a celebration of life for Mr. Crump this weekend at the VFW, at which time they announced that they've put in an application to the National VFW headquarters to rename VFW Post 2423, the James B. Crump Memorial Post of Indian Trail. Just for your information. Other than that, Happy New Year. God bless. Oh, yes, we're going to also, I've been reminded, coming up for our citizen of the quarter again, and that's going to be on an upcoming meeting for your nominations. So think about it.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank everybody for coming, and I wanted to tell Mike that, thank him for, he's, I think you are responsible for this reliable growth or one of the big contributors for it, getting all the towns together and, and working together, working with Lake Park and, is it Weddington? And, and all the different towns and just, just to say thank you and to let you know that that's, I mean, that's kind of going above and beyond. He does it because he wants to do it, and I appreciate it. And I think the council, again, is doing a wonderful job, and I thank them for doing. And staff, always thank you for everything that you do. And that's about it. I hope everybody has a Happy New Year. And I hope this is the best year for all of us. I hope we, 2019, we all get rich and happy and richer in some cases, and happy. And just know you've got a council up here that will work with you. And that's one of the, the most proudest things that I have, is that these guys will go beyond. So thank you for coming.
And Mr. Morris?
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I just wanted to explain a little bit about why I voted against the contributions to nonprofits. One, I have a philosophical difference, and I struggle with this when government collects taxpayers' money and then redistributes it. And I understand that that's the role of government to some degree. But I find it difficult for me to, with all these worthy nonprofits out there, trying to decide out of $3,000 and, and then dozens of nonprofits, how to distribute that money. So I just choose not to, to go down that path. And if you know me, you know that I'm not against nonprofits. I believe that people should donate their, their time as well as their money. But again, I, I just don't believe in, in government doing that for me. I believe I'm the best judge of where my money needs to go. And other than that, Happy 2019, and I hope this is the best year ever for everybody. Thank you.
Very good. One quick thing, to piggyback on Mr. Cohen and Mr. Head and everybody with this council. I just wanted to recognize our town manager for his great leadership and professionalism that he's brought to Indian Trail, which complements our professional council we have. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
On that note, we do have a quick closed session with NCGS 1433181183 and NCGS 1433181185. I need a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Three-minute break. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to come out of closed session. All in favor? That would be unanimous? Mr. Wardell, Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right, good night, everyone.